So with the public hearing and we are in preparation now for our consolidated plan for the city of Sioux Falls. And so what I want to do, take a moment to do this afternoon is to give you the background on the consolidated plan. Some preliminary housing and community development needs. So I, earlier before we broke for lunch, I shared that we do have a survey that's live on our website if you go to sioufals.org/housingsurvey. We have had that survey live for, since the beginning of May. We will keep that survey open till the end of May. We've had quite a few people respond to that already. So we're going to share some preliminary results of some of that feedback that we've received already. And then we will again have a time where we're going to ask for your engagement and your input. So to give you some background on the consolidated plan, the city of Sioux Falls is a HUD-designated entitlement community. And we receive funding from the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Grant directly from the federal government, from HUD, to operate our federal programs. To receive the funds, the city is required to do a three to five-year consolidated plan, a one-year annual plan, and analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. So to talk a little bit about what types of activities are eligible under our federal funding streams is the CDBG-eligible activities include reconstruction and rehabilitation of homes and other property, down payment assistance, construction of community centers, parks, and recreation facilities or facilities to serve special populations like senior centers, construction of public facilities and improvements, including streets and sidewalks, demolition of property and preparing land for other uses, code enforcement, provisions of employment assistance, including, or for example, employment training programs, provision of public services for special needs populations. And with our home fund dollars, they can be used for a wide range of affordable housing type activities. So what does the city of Sioux Falls receive from HUD? Well, we receive about $1.5 million a year in federal funding through CDBG and home. And past activities that we have engaged in with our federal funding include single-family home rehabilitation, a furnace replacement program, emergency mobile home repair, tenant-based rental assistance. We invest in the bright futures and homeless care management and assistance. We provide assistance for persons who are homeless, neighborhood revitalization, home buyers assistance. We have partnered with Habitat for Humanity and Land Acquisition, accessible modifications, and fair housing education and outreach. What I'd like to do is take an opportunity to do a little bit of a deeper dive into our current programs that we operate with our funding through the city. First of which is our Neighborhood Revitalization Program. And this program really strives to reverse the progression of deterioration in our city's older neighborhoods and to provide more housing options for our low-income homebuyers. Through this program and the use of local and federal dollars, we're able to allocate funds to a nonprofit agency and the partner that we've been working with as Affordable Housing Solutions for the acquisition and development of vacant lots or lots with dilapidated structures within the core area of Sioux Falls. So the sites are developed for a single-family home, or if appropriate in that site, we have also done smaller twin-home developments. So newly constructed homes are required to be owner-occupied and available to households with incomes at below 80% of the area median income, as established by HUD. There's also an affordability period that comes with those homes. So depending on the amount of funds that we invest in the creation of that new project depends on how long that property must remain an affordable income property. So it, the periods range from five to 10 to 15 years that there's a requirement that it has to be a low-income family that lives in that home. Next is our Single Family Rehabilitation Program. This program is for low and moderate income residents who own a house within the Sioux Falls city limits and need financial assistance to pay for improvements and repairs. Assistance is offered in the form of a no-interest deferred loan and is required to be repaid at the time of the sale of the property. So you may wonder, how would I qualify for a program like this? Well, you must meet the income guidelines and you must own your single-family home. It has to be within the Sioux Falls city limits, and you have to have owned and lived in your home for at least one year. You also, we will ask, are you current on your taxes, insurance, and mortgage payments? Do you pay your bills and loans and other expenses on time? And is your home structurally sound? Those are some of the questions that we would ask in qualifying you. And the kinds of repairs that we make through the Single Family Home Program include, but aren't limited to, faulty plumbing, heating, or electrical systems, worn or leaking roof, windows and doors, deteriorating steps and stairs, unserviceable floor covering, necessary painting, siding replacement, insulation, weatherization, and ADA accessibility. We have also developed our Furnace Replacement Program into the Single Family Home Program. So again, if you're in need of furnace replacement, you can get it through our Single Family Home Program. Another program that we operate is the Rental Rehabilitation Program. So the Rental Rehabilitation Program is for owners of rental properties within the Sioux Falls city limits that meet the requirements of the program. Property owners must be code compliant and in good standing with the city's Planning and Development Services Department. Some of the types of things that you can use under this program or the types of repairs that you can make include utilizing exterior and interior rehabilitation but cannot be used for appliances, exterior work covered including roof, doors, windows, porches, step stairs, gutters, downspouts, siding, paint, insulation, foundation, and driveway curb. And interior work, including mechanical, electrical, plumbing, paint, wall repair, floor coverings, cabinetry, and insulation. And you can see in each one of these slides, we have a before and after picture of a home that required our assistance and one that we provided assistance to. So it is doing great things in helping folks make those necessary rehabilitations. In addition, we also provide emergency mobile home repair. So this program finances assistance to low and moderate income residents who own a mobile home within the Sioux Falls city limits and need financial assistance to maintain their mobile home in decent, safe, and sanitary conditions. This program offers up to $3,000 to any one mobile home during its lifetime. So that is given in a one-year excusable grant. To qualify the program, you have to meet the income guidelines, you need to be the owner of your mobile home, you have to be within the Sioux Falls city limits, and you have to have at least owned it for one year. The kind of repairs that can be made under the Mobile Home Repair Program include faulty heating system, faulty electrical, faulty plumbing, and in some cases siding. To talk about some of the preliminary findings that we have discovered when we did our survey that we've had live, I'll go through some of those findings now. But first, before we do that, I think we need to frame up what is affordable housing and how is that defined? And there are in your agenda packets that you received today, a great resource in the back of that that include definitions of acronyms because the federal government really loves their acronyms. So it's a great way to maybe understand what some of those acronyms that you may have seen and providing definitions for those. But the federal definition for affordability is housing costs are affordable if they do not exceed 30% of households' gross income. Costs include basic utilities, mortgage insurance, HOA fees, and property taxes. So households paying less than 30% for housing are cost-burdened or greater than 30%, but households paying greater than 50% for housing are severely cost-burdened. So I think in our discussion today, we've really touched on two of those, both of those income levels. This here is a diagram of income thresholds and targeting. So you can kind of see the 30% average median income, 30, and that's about $26,000 per year. Very low is considered that $26,000 to $43,000 per year. Low income is a $43,000 to $69,000 per year. And median or moderate is $69,000 to $103,000 per year. And these income levels are based on a family of four. Also, you can see next to that would be the types of housing that would be associated with that group, including when you're talking about the extremely low, most of these folks are public housing, Section 8, tenant-based, rental assistance, traditional housing, and other subsidized rentals is what they would apply for or be eligible for. For the very low, also public housing, Section 8, rental tax credit developments and other rental properties, shared equity and land trust for homeownership. When we're looking at low income, generally they live within privately held or provided rental housing. Ownership with shared equity and land trust, deed restriction products, attached homes and homes in affordable areas. And then we're talking about the immediate to moderate income, often are living in privately provided rental housing, generally targeted for homeownership programs, can buy without assistance of affordable areas. So to go over the market overview, we in Sioux Falls have had a steady growth in population over the last 17 years. We've added 52,000 residents at an average of 2.5% growth each year. Our home values have increased faster than rents. The median rent was $521 in 2000, which is when I actually moved to Sioux Falls, and $781 in 2017. That's an increase of 50% for renters and are paying about $250 more per month in rent. Medium home value back in 2000 was $101,000 roughly, and in 2017, they were at $193,000. This is an increase of 91%, and homes have nearly doubled in value since 2000. By comparison, median income increases by 20% for renters and 50% for owners. Cost burden affects one in four households here in Sioux Falls. So for renters, 22% of low-income renters face a housing cost burden that is greater than 30% of their income. 20% of low-income renters are facing cost burden that is greater than 50% of their income. For ownership, 24% of low-income owners face a housing cost burden that is greater than 30% of their income. And 11% of low-income owners face a housing cost burden that is greater than 50% of their income. So as we have been alluding to throughout the day-to-day, it is a growing problem within our city. So when we're looking at the preliminary findings from the survey that we've had live on our website, we asked, what are the top five greatest unmet needs in housing, in housing needs in Sioux Falls according to stakeholders or community input? Housing for persons with serious mental illness was one. Housing for adults with criminal histories is another. Rental housing for low-income renters, housing for homeless families, and homeownership opportunities for low and moderate income residents were the ones that rise to the surfaces of the top five unmet needs. We can also look at, in your opinion, what is the most single significant housing challenge in Sioux Falls? This question was asked in great response, general affordability of housing. About 50% of the people that responded to this question said that general affordable housing was one of the most significant challenges. Next to that was under-invested from government or the public sector. And then after that was not enough quality housing available. So it is a problem of quality housing stock within our city. When asked, what are the top five greatest unmet community development needs of Sioux Falls according to stakeholders? Folks that responded to our survey highlighted mental health services, access to reliable and affordable public transportation, affordable childcare, support services for low-income and job training programs. So those are some of the preliminary findings and a little bit of information about our current programs. At this time, we would like to gain your input. So part of the development of our consolidated plan over five years is really hearing from you all after we've set the stage this morning with the wonderful dialogue that we had and learning about different housing projects that are happening in our city and learning about what are the challenges, trends, and opportunities in single-family ownership, and then what are the challenges, opportunities, and rental. There was some great discussion that was started and had, but I believe that there's more discussion that is available. And this is an opportunity for us to dive back into that conversation, for you to share what your questions or your concerns may be about some of the needs in our city, but to also lift up solutions. Because one of the things that we're looking for with our consolidated plan is how can we direct our funding to meet those problems? So we need your assistance in identifying those problems, but then also offering up solutions that we can leverage our dollars to help provide those. So at this time, is anybody have a concern that they would like to bring forward or a comment? Yes, over there. And I, before Matt gives you the microphone, I will ask that in order to spur the conversation and to keep it going forward, I'll ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes if you can, so that we give everybody who wants to speak the opportunity to speak. And looking forward to hearing what the challenges may be and then solutions if you have some. Mike is yours.
Can everybody hear me? I'm Justine. I'm with the Healthline Center. I am the Network of Care Coordinator. And so are we in the, we're in the public hearing?
We are in the public hearing phase, yes.
I guess one of my questions is, I see on here that it says that everybody is invited, racial and ethnic minorities. And if you look around the room, so I'm wondering what the city, if there's a plan to engage people that look like me.
That is a great question, and thank you very much for that. You know, the summit was our first opportunity to really change the way that we do our public hearings. In the past, the public hearings that we've had in conjunction with preparation for the consolidated plan have been poorly attended. So we wanted to think of a new way to try and draw people into that conversation. And we thought a housing summit that was focused on several different initiatives would be a great way to spur that conversation. However, we know that the summit is not going to be all-encompassing, knowing that this is not going to be the be-all, end-all for a way to gather that public input for our consolidated plan. So our plan is after the summit to take back the feedback that we get and then go out into the community. We want to meet people where they are because we also understand that folks that have an interest in housing are also working. And a 2:00 time or a 5:30 time or a 7:30 time is not necessarily easy to make or to set aside in your schedule. So we will be looking for different ways and opportunities to go to people in the public and engage in their communities to have additional conversations. And if you would like to work with us and help us provide some of those opportunities, bring us into your communities where we can have those conversations with you, I encourage you to reach out to us because this is the beginning of the dialogue that we would like to have, and we again want to meet people where they are. So it answers, hope that answers your question that yes, we are looking to do that, but we want to go to them because we know it's not always convenient for them to come to us. Anybody else? We have one over there in the green. Right there, Matt. Yep, thanks.
Hi, my name is Sarah. I'm, I work at Seacog. One of the questions that keeps coming up in my mind, or maybe it's just a comment, and I should have asked some of the panelists earlier today, is the relationship between public transit and then parking? Because I keep hearing, especially in terms of the affordable housing rental market, the challenge of giving access to, giving people access to public transportation. But I also think that there are certain parking requirements for some of these newer developments, partly based on what their renters want, but also what the city is expecting. I don't know what those are exactly, but that kind of engenders a type of development that is a little bit lower density, which then in turn makes me question how that provides access to public transportation. They just kind of seem out of line with each other. So that's just a comment. I don't think it's going to be fixed today, but just curious.
Thank you for bringing that forward. And yes, we do have a Transit Task Force team that is looking at our public transportation now. I'm not sure if that's something that has been on their radar. However, this is a great opportunity to bring up multiple things because as we know, housing is not in a silo and that there's many things that affect housing. Your ability to go to work, to get to work affects housing. Your ability to find a job and to maintain that job affects your housing. So I think the transportation conversation is going to be brought up and should be brought up in conjunction with housing because it is such a critical piece. So thank you for elevating that through your comments, and I will look forward to sharing your comment with our transportation team and our parking folks so that they can take a little bit of a look to that. Yes, right there in the white man? Bruce?
I call me Katie. I'm an advocate for the homeless and displaced persons and homeless veterans downtown. I've been working on the streets for like 26 years now. I've raised my seven and 27 foster kids in the process, so I know what I'm doing. I'm concerned in fact, on the fact that we don't have any shelters down there available for everybody. There are particular shelters down there that have their rules and regulations. They lock their doors when we start putting the heat on them. Then they come up with another reason why they do not want certain people in or how to help them. Right now, this week, we've been having rain. We do not have shelters for some of these, most of the people down there, men, women, and children. We do not have facilities available for them. I would like to know what our city is going to do on an emergency basis to take care of this situation. They say the summer's coming in, well, so, what about the floodwaters? Men were floating down the, I had people dying underneath the bridges because they couldn't get in. These are my friends as well. I've been down there, you know me very well, and I know them. I've been going to city council meetings. We're all here today because of my efforts to get this going. I want to know what we're going to do for our city people. They are a community in themselves, if you want to look at it like that, but they are our people. They might not be of the same race, color, creed, or church. They still are our people. We need to do more for them, and that's why I'm here, is to encourage everybody. I know we did the part about the realtors and et cetera, et cetera, but I'm here for the people particularly. I'm not giving up. I'm not going anywhere. As long as they're there, I'm here and I'm going to keep pushing for them. So I'd like to know what the city is going to come up with for an emergency basis to get these people off the streets, at least give them a break from the heat, let them go to the bathroom. We have a church out there helping with laundry, et cetera, and some new advances that they're making that I'm aware of. But again, I want to encourage everybody to step out, start talking amongst yourselves, see what we can do. If there's a vacant building, let's get the people in it, even if it's only for a time being until we can come up with something else. And I thank you for being here. I thank you for all your efforts and for listening, but I do expect and hope people will reach out better, that I'm not just one of the only ones down there. Okay, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much for lifting up a known problem in our community. We do understand that there is a homeless population. The homeless numbers just came out a few weeks ago, and it is definitely something that is on our radar, and I appreciate you bringing light to that. We do provide funding to the Bishop Dudley because we see the importance of that mission, but there's definitely opportunity to do more. And I would say that if you have a solution to that or you have ideas, that you do bring those forward because we do recognize that problem. But in order to address that problem, we need collaborative and inspired ideas. And the way that you can provide that feedback is through the board, through the online survey, those are some ways, or just reach out to us at the city. We do have an email address, affordablehousing@sioufals.org, where you could send that email too and provide those real solutions that you might have and ideas. I am going to go to the next person to give everybody an opportunity to talk, but thanks for sharing. Man?
Hi, my name is Cher, and I just wanted to say I did meet you at the city council meeting that day, and I wanted to say thank you for reaching out to me. One of the solutions I would like to share about the discussion about the homeless, there's a couple pieces in particular. When I went down to the mission, I found out that they do have a checklist and the names are on there. And they are in the process, we hope, of creating, along with hopefully the police department in the city of Sioux Falls, a buddy checklist. By 11:00 PM, or let's say 11:11, my favorite time, if they're not in the building by that time, we have a buddy checklist and a couple of the people that are sober, they're the people who are willing to be the leaders of this checklist system, working with the Sioux Falls Police Department so that by a certain amount of time, in a certain time, the round will be happening, where they'll do the checklist in the summer and the winter. I'm also a real estate broker, just to let everybody know, if you all ever did find a home or a building that was out of quit, it would be an awesome opportunity. I'm going to just mention one place called the DreamCenter.org because a lot of people that are homeless, they need to be rehabilitated through drug and alcohol or anger abuse situations, and we could start one of those here in Sioux Falls. The other problem is, is the county home that we have facilitates opportunities for people who might have drinking problems to live there, but then we have homeless people that don't drink and they need a place to live too. Last but not least, Onestophome.org is a not-for-profit that I would like to start, and anybody can take it over if they want to, and I'm hoping that Bruce and the people over at Community Outreach would do it. Right now, if a person is going to go for a rental, they have to apply. That application is 27 pages, as we learned earlier, and it's $50 per every place they go to. So sometimes some families are spending an upward of all of their rent money just to apply and get denied. So if there is a one-stop shop through the city that we're going to be doing for our triage, perhaps the one-stop shop for home could start right there too, and the recidivism rate could slow down and a person could leave there with one piece of paper that says, just like we do in our sales, they're not pre-qualified to purchase a home, but they are qualified to get a home, and this is their background check, and this is their application process, and this is stamped approval, so they can go to Lloyd and they can go to Dunham, and they can go to all of the different places with a preliminary process of approval without the 27 pages at each place they go to and $100 fee at each place they go to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comments. Right here. Please introduce yourself as well.
Cameron Nelson with Lifescape. I just want to talk in regard to CDBG and your home. You had put out a statement that your advisory board was with recommendations based on these big hairy audacious goals. Could you speak a little bit to those three bullet points? The 1,000 housing units created by 2022, the creation of a housing clinic with 200 contacts per month, and the increased rental registry participation by 25%?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about our B head goals. Prior to me coming to the city, I've been with the city of Sioux Falls for about two and a half months as the housing manager. And when I came into this program, my team of housing specialists had worked alongside other departments and the administration to come up with housing goals for our department, one of those being creating 1,000 new dwelling units by 2020. What we mean by that is both single-family owner-occupied housing and rental housing. That number is a big number. And in order to achieve 1,000 new dwellings by 2020, it means that we're going to have to work in 2022? Yeah, 2020, that's not giving me much time. So yes, thank you for correcting me, 2022. We're going to have to work in new and innovative ways to make that happen. That means that we're going to have to continue to look at our partnerships with organizations that we're currently partnering with, but then looking at who we have not partnered with yet, that there may be an opportunity to create more housing. It's engaging in understanding what the problems are for our private developers in creating affordable housing and how can we work with them, not only through the housing program, but with other departments of city to make sure that we can, if there is a way for us to help alleviate some of those costs that we're working in partnership with them to do that. So that also goes into the rental side as well. How can we, as the city, look across all of our departments to see where it can get easier for those developers to create those rental properties? But then how can we leverage our programs also to incentivize or encourage those developments? And we have a couple of tools in our toolbox that we can utilize already, but how can we partner? Are we in the, we're in the public hearing? we partner our CDBG and home funds with private dollars to make those things happen? So to get to that 1,000 dwelling goal, it's going to mean a partnership between public and nonprofit and private entities to reach that goal. When we talk about the housing clinic, this was brought forward by, I believe it was our city attorney's office at the time for affair housing, knowing that there is a disconnect in resources. And what I mean by that is, if you have not read the 2016 Thrive study that was done on housing, I encourage you to do so. It's going to really open your eyes to a lot of information about housing within our community. And one of the things that you will recognize right away that is lifted up in that study is that here in Sioux Falls, we are program-rich, but we are system-poor. If you need housing assistance, if you're in a crisis situation, our system is very difficult to navigate right now. It's very hard to figure out where to go. And when you do go there, you don't know if you're going to qualify right away. So then you bounce from service to service until you hopefully do find a place that can help you, if you get to that point. Most often, people in a crisis situation will call 1, 2, or 3, and then they'll give up. So there's a disconnect between knowing what those services are and actually taking that step when you're in a crisis situation. So the housing clinic is a B-head goal where we can, from our panels that we had earlier this afternoon, and multiple times, that we need to figure out systematically how we can communicate and how we can connect with each other so that people aren't having to bounce from service to service to service, to see, only to see if they maybe qualify, then get rejected and move to the next one. So if we can systematically, through a housing clinic, link those resources together, work together as a networked group to help provide those services quicker, maybe through an intake process, then that allows those organizations that are working in case management, because we also heard today that case management is extremely effective, that they can spend more time in case management, less in the intake process or qualifying people for programs. So that's one way that the housing clinic could potentially make a difference. But it's going to take, again, partnership between the city with nonprofit organizations and maybe even some private development funds that are looking to invest. Because when you're talking about creating a system, we're talking about an intake-type system. We're talking about a software system. We're talking about how these people are tracked and recorded within our city. We also know that, and we demonstrated it here at the housing summit, that technology is playing a critical role in our lives now and going forward. Many of our youth engage through an app and through their mobile phones. They're not always going to be coming into your facility to ask for help. They're not going to initiate that first. They're going to do a search for it online. So how can we create a housing resource that is virtual, where they can kind of self-diagnose where they're at as far as need, and they can begin that process of accessing those services for themselves? So that is one area where I think the housing clinic will meet that need. That definitely plays into the next B-head goal, which is our rental registry. It is an ordinance, so if you have a rental property within the city of Sioux Falls, that you be registered with the city of Sioux Falls, and we want to increase the participation in our rental registry. And I will propose an idea to you about that. You may not want to register your property with the city of Sioux Falls. Now, me being new into housing, I'm not sure why you wouldn't want to do that, but let me tell you a benefit potentially if you do. If we can develop a housing resource, and if we can develop a housing clinic where people can access resources online, imagine a world where we had an app on a website where you could enter in what your household income is. Maybe I make $43,000 a year. Maybe I'm new to Sioux Falls and I want to figure out where's the best place for me to live. Maybe I'm not new in Sioux Falls, but I don't really know where to start to find a new place to live. So I go into this calculator and I enter in what my annual salary is, and then I enter in what are my fixed costs? I know that I have a $323 car payment every month that's going to come out. I know what my annual, my monthly cellphone bill is, and you calculate all of those. And then we provide for you estimates on what it might be for our basic utilities, and that then spits out a number. And then based on a calculation, that number then says what properties you may be eligible to rent. The great way to do that and to then produce those results is for folks to register their rental properties with the city so that we do know what is available for rental stock within the city, and then we can provide that information through that online app. So that's how those three B-head goals that we have some initial visions for. But again, that's what this meeting today is, is to also get your input, your feedback, your ideas on how we can create 1,000 new dwellings. What does a housing clinic for the city of Sioux Falls look like? And how can we provide better access to services of the great organizations, 17 of which are here with us today? And then how can we increase that participation in our rental registry program, which is a required, a requirement due to city ordinance? But how can we then leverage that information to provide people with better access and opportunity for housing? Answer your question? Thank you. Anybody else have comment, question, idea? I'd love to hear some ideas. Yes, right there in the, in the middle aisle there?
My name is Melanie Bliss. I live at 2021 South First Avenue. I'm the mayor of that corner. I would like to speak to neighborhood revitalization. When you live in an old house in an old part of the center city, we still have telephone and light poles above ground. We were also part of the flood program that the pipes are taller than me that store water in front of our house. All of that was torn up, but we never got any underground utilities. So don't ever forget about the core that is a core but not properly infrastructured. So aside from that, I am wearing a jacket that was made in a favela in Brazil, and in Brazil, slums go up the sides of the mountains. And so every one of these is a house. So just for some context. How do people become homeless? Natural disasters such as fire or flood, loss of a job, high medical bills, domestic violence or abuse, eviction from a rental unit, building is condemned, moved to a new city or town where no housing is available, divorce or breakup of a relationship, lack of affordable housing, substance abuse problems, and poverty. In program year 2004, 15 years ago, for the Community Development Block Grant, goals and priorities were set forth, advocating more safe and affordable housing units for the very poor and for replacement housing for units lost in city or county development. This effort jointly includes responding to the complex problems associated with substandard housing and poverty. In 2004, the discussion being considered was to replace, one for one, any unit demolished or removed by advocating replacement units, lost in city or county development that keep the resident housed and not homeless when the unit is demolished. To date, some 15 years later, this is not a formal practice in Sioux Falls or Minnehaha County. The National Alliance to End Homelessness is a national leader in these activities, and more concerted local action is needed to end homelessness. Leaders must push to preserve and increase the stock of permanent affordable housing for those living on extremely low incomes. Ending homelessness is not possible without investing in housing accessible to families and individuals living on low incomes. Leaders need to focus attention on preventing homelessness. Programs that serve those at risk of homelessness must also be partners in our goal of ending homelessness by strengthening the safety net that provides support. Services such as mental health, substance abuse treatment, financial support, child welfare, and assistance exiting jail or prison need to ensure the clients they serve do not become homeless. The role of state and local governments in this effort is paramount. Working in the community to create strong systems that place individuals and families in permanent housing and on the road to stability and self-sufficiency is both urgent and critical. 15 years is a very long time to be talking. For a young child, that is longer than their entire K to 12 education. Let us forge ahead now, grasp the vision for what can be, and do it now.
Thank you so much for your comments.
I'm not finished.
Well, we do need to make time for others to comment, so I appreciate you sharing that. And we will move forward to somebody else that has comments. Thank you so much for that input. We have somebody in the back there? And a reminder, we are limiting the comments to three to four minutes, so please take that into consideration. Thank you.
I'll try to keep this brief. So I was part of the, a public group that worked on the transit problem. Here we're talking about the affordable housing problem, and I think that what we need to recognize is that there is a deeper problem that we are trying to address from two different angles here, and it's that we have urban systems that are not working together. They're disjointed. And what I'm talking about is transportation and development need to be taken in consideration with one another. We have, we can't make transit work without greater density. That allows for more people to be connected to their jobs, to their housing, and there's an opportunity, I'll be curious to see what comes out of the transit initiative. But I think with affordable housing, you know, you mentioned that you have this big hairy audacious goal of over 1,000 units by 2022. That's going to be pretty challenging to do, and I think probably if we keep going the way we have been going, it's going to be like scattering seeds to the wind. They're going to be located all throughout Sioux Falls, probably all around the fringe of the city where they really need to be in the core of the city. I know that's challenging because it takes infill development. I think one solution here is that I think we need a development authority in Sioux Falls, a publicly owned, privately run authority that is targeting properties on the arterial corridors, like Minnesota Avenue and 12th Street, to be building mixed-use, live-work types of developments where people can be located directly adjacent to public transportation. They can be located closer to their jobs. And when you do that with the development authority, you also have the opportunity for value capture, where the city, the development authority is actually able to make money off of the leases and reinvest that into new projects and create a flywheel effect and get more development along those corridors. So I think that we need to stop operating in silos, and I think we need to start looking at how these urban systems work together.
Thank you so much for your comments. I appreciate that, and thank you for offering a solution as well. We do appreciate those solutions being offered up and opportunities to look at housing in new and different ways, so I appreciate that and hope that you have, will take the time to write that down in some fashion so that we can not only get that in film, which we are recording this session, but also in writing so that we can take a deeper dive into that. So I appreciate that. Right next to him there?
I just got here, so I'm not sure if it was said, but when we talk about density, we look at the individual buildings as dense, as dense, but how do we make each individual unit dense and affordable? How do we maximize the square footage in each space so that we can pack more units into an area and still be focused on the livability of that space? And this is something that's been done, I mean, look at Japan, look at Denmark, look, just identify specific architectural projects, prefab processes. I know San Francisco has invested in prefabricated technology to expand their housing supply. I think if just, if we look at redefining what we view as a home rather than what we do now, which is 3,000 square foot with a three-stall garage, how do we, how do we expand our vision of that? How do we take methods of cohousing? How do we create prefabricated modules and stack them, expediting the process of onsite build, really taking the time to research? And I think you mentioned something about the housing, is it the lab or the?
Housing clinic?
Housing clinic, yeah. So I mean, if we can start being more versatile and start rethinking the scope of what a home can be in Sioux Falls, so.
Great. Thank you for your comment. I really appreciate that. Yes, it is going to take looking at new and innovative ways and different types of housing. If you were part of our panel discussion this morning, we invited a gentleman named Chris Stout from the Veterans Community Project from Kansas City, and he talked about a veterans' tiny home community that they created as a solution to their homeless veteran problem in Kansas City. So as we look to the future of our city, what does Sioux Falls look like? And maybe it's not always the same structures that we've been building. Maybe we will need to look at different types of housing to meet those needs. So thank you for lifting that up. I really appreciate that. Do we have others that are looking to provide additional input?
The solution that I came up with was a program or an opportunity to call it Mom's Home and Dad's Home. Right now, we're missing a critical link in the prison industry. When somebody comes out of prison, there's a missing link. If someone could look into that, I know there used to be, but there isn't now. Mom's Home and Dad's Home are predicated upon single parents who are in a transitionary situation. They're not currently with their parents, and they would utilize a four or five-bedroom home, rent a room, be able to have their children be visited in a safe place, and that's just one idea I came up with.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments, solutions, problems that they want to lift up that you'd like to see addressed in our consolidated plan? Yep, right over there?
Hi, I'm Eric Schofield with WS Construction. So thanks for putting this together. I know there's a lot of concerns and opportunities out there, but I think this is a really good start, and I appreciate being included in the conversation. I guess for me, where it starts to, I made three big notes today. Deregulation seems like something that everybody wants to talk about, to enable new construction, to make it easier, whether it's multi or single housing. I think it'd be cool to put somebody together and just list those out specifically so the city can help partner with us and focus on that, to remove that obstacle. Then for me, the financing and the financing pools. Nobody really wants to back that from a traditional banking standpoint when you talk about the risk involved with it. So maybe there's a combination of, can we look at doing like an event tax, or can we do something, a half penny tax on something else from the city's standpoint, and then challenge our private entrepreneurs or businesses to kind of come forward with a match, to come with that, and then kind of pull that all together? I like this development idea back here, development authority, something like that, a board combined of private, public, drive this thing home. And if you really want to get it done in 2022, I think we quickly have to form an idea and a vision to get that to happen. So just some ideas on how to maybe pull it together. I don't know if you guys are that far yet or not, so appreciate the time.
Yes, thank you for your comments. And this is exactly what the summit was intended to do. So I can say I'm extremely proud, on behalf of myself and my team, that these types of conversations are coming to the service and those types of ideas are bubbling up because that is exactly what we want. We don't want only not solutions brought forward, but people like yourself that are willing to help us drive at those solutions, get down into the details. So I hope that you'll fill out one of those comment cards or make sure that you reach out to me after the summit if you'd be interested in being involved in developing that task force where we dive into, you know, what are some of those barriers in that construction that we can highlight and then bring together financing to, to look at that. So thank you for offering those comments, and I look forward to hopefully engaging with you more in the future, looking at that specifically. Anybody else have comments, solutions to offer up? I know, Melanie, I did cut off some of your time, but we do have an opportunity if you'd like to share more. And again, I'll limit it to four minutes in case somebody else is inspired by your comments and wants to add additional information.
This is the, I have the 2004 and the 2005 CDBG report. At the 2:30 hearing, I have every subject written down. They're the same today. At the 7 o'clock hearing at night, there was some more exciting out-of-the-box thinking. So I just thought that was very interesting, that this-
So I just thought that was very interesting, that the same lists would appear.
Thank you for, for bringing that up. And I think that's a telling thing that you highlight for us there, is that the problems still exist today. We have not found a great solution. And so thank you for elevating that and helping us be aware that these have been problems that have been talked around for a long time. But we are hoping that, again, with the start of this summit, engaging new people, bringing new people to the conversation, having better attended public hearings like this, that we can start to take some of those innovative ideas that may have been brought up in the past and put them to action, or take things that we've learned today to put them into action as well. So thank you very much for bringing that information forward, I appreciate it. Does anybody else have input, comments, or solutions to provide?
Again, my name's Catherine. We were talking a little earlier about the Dudley House and the mission. They are all church-related, they have their own rules and regulations, if there's a problem, they have the right to shut their doors and lock you out, et cetera. They are not, they're helping as many people that need the help. I do not want someone misunderstanding that the Bishop Dudley House is answering all the questions and has all the answers, that's not true. I am one that has been doing a lot of investigating on different things, and we need a place that is going to be open to everyone, no matter if they've been kicked out of the Dudley or the mission, or any other place of shelter. We need an open shelter in the city for everyone that needs that assistance, and that overrides these other organizations. It is just not happening in those organizations. And if you want to talk to me further, I can enlighten you a lot more than a lot of people think. So I am very serious, and I'm very honest with what I'm saying. We do need help in the city, the city needs to provide for the people. It just does not come into renting an apartment, or getting a mobile trailer, et cetera. We need help, these people are desperate. And that's why I try to encourage all these meetings, is because the people are out there. They were like us once in a while, earlier in their years, and they come across some bad step down. So we got to help them get back up again. And we got to take care of our own, they are our people. And they are good people, too. They're not all bad people like everybody labels them. That's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much again for commenting and lifting that up and sharing your passion with us about the homeless community in our, in our city. I appreciate that and continuing to bring attention to that. Thank you. Are there any other? Yes, right here in the front.
Okay, here's, I'll just throw out another solution, and it was mentioned at the first panel today, about a housing trust fund. Housing trust funds are all over the country, and they do wonderful things. Sioux Falls, I think, needs to be looking at that, because it provides a dedic, you need a dedicated revenue source that will go into this every single year on a continuing basis, and that is money that is always going to be available to use for whatever house, type of housing you want that funds to be used for. And then you could take that and use it to match, like I think another gentleman mentioned, with private dollars. And then you have an even bigger pot that you can do things with. So I think that's something, because it's not a brand-new idea. It's been done all over the country for a number of years, and it works really well. So I think that's something we need to be looking at in this community.
Thank you very much for bringing forward that. Yes, I know that that is a, an opportunity that we have to look at, and definitely some one that we will. So thank you for lifting that up out of the conversation that we had earlier today. Is there anybody else that has comments, solution, anything of that nature to provide?
My name is Cher. In the last six months, I've been doing inspections on properties, and I just wanted to say, one of the solutions that I recommend is, I've found over 30 properties that are vacant, I've taken pictures of. And if each one of us would just go home and drive home in our prop, in our, drive home today and take a picture, I'm sure if we open up our eyes, we'll find that there's 100 vacant homes that the city could certainly do something with.
Thank you. Does anybody else have comment or solutions to bring forward? Seeing no more comments or solutions to bring forward, I just want to, again, thank you all for your time, those of you that were here present for the beginning part of the summit, or if you came specifically for this afternoon session. I appreciate you taking the time out of your day to come and share with us to not only just fixate on the problems, because I think sometimes we can get too focused on what's wrong and not offering up those solutions. So I really do appreciate when you do provide feedback, to really offer up, not just addressing what that problem is, but how can we find a solution to that problem? So thank you for putting on your innovation hats, opening up your hearts to that conversation. We do have 17 organizations in the room that provide either programming for housing or housing assistance. So if you're not aware of these organizations, I do encourage you to stop by, gather some information, and educate yourself on what they do, including our own program booth back in the corner. We have brochures about the programs that we offer with the city. Again, if you do want to engage and participate with us further, if you would like to be part of a task force, a group, a focus group where we're diving deeper into some of these topics, I encourage you to fill out the comment card that's in Agenda Packet before you. You can email us at affordablehousing@siouffalls.org. And again, I'll, I'll touch, please take that survey. It does take just a teeny bit of time to do that online survey at our website at siouffalls.org/housingsurvey. But it is another way that we can really gain some really great feedback that we're going to use in the creation of our plan. If you didn't feel comfortable bringing forth a comment or a solution, but you feel more comfortable writing that down, we do have some boards in the back where you can write down what your solution idea is, so that you can share with us in that way. Or again, if you want to do it in a more private way, please reach out to our department and send us an email, and we'll be in communication with you or follow up. So thanks again for coming today. I appreciate your time, your attention, and your inputs, and I hope you have a great rest of the day.[1796.83][1796.83]